Chair, you ready?
Yep.
I'm gonna call the -- what?
We're rolling.
We're rolling. Call the meeting to order. Can we please rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'm going to ask for a vote to do sort of a point of information about what's been going on with the wastewater treatment facility, because we're getting a lot of inquiries from residents. And a motion to add an informational item to the beginning of the agenda?
Salute.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, just for our residents edification, and for those of you here, we have had an issue with our wastewater treatment facility. The digester, which we've discussed before, had some issues. And one of them is broken, or it's broken. John Bodie's here. I asked him to attend so we could discuss this a little bit. So, we've been getting emails over the last couple of weeks from residents regarding the odor down there. Now, we usually get emails from residents because if we don't put enough deodorizer or things like that, we have odor issues, not just with the landfill, but also with the water waste treatment facility. But this has been particularly unpleasant. So, we've had the health director down to the site. We've had numerous meetings last week discussing what's going on down there. And, John, do you want to just get up and just give a little update? That would be helpful. Thank you.
I got first of all?
Yes.
And hold?
No.
No, okay. Digester will be finished cleaning by Wednesday. So, that hatch to that tank should be closed after they're done cleaning. We have a bid package together for the repair. That is whole. It's to purchasing. We're just waiting on a few last minute items. We hoping to get that out by Wednesday. If we get it out by Wednesday, we're gonna have a bid opening of the 15th of December. The WPCA Commission is aware of the odor complaints and the problems that it's causing. So, they would -- came up with the idea of having a special meeting next week, appropriating the funds out of the fund balance to get the board approvals done in the month of December. So, hopefully shortly after the bids are opened, the RTM meets, we approve the final approval, and we can get a contractor awarded and get them rolling by the middle of January is the hope.
So, I just want to, just for the record and for anybody who may be listening, we've been emailing back and forth with a lot of residents. And John shared information. I just want to say, the primary digester
Yes.
is a 600,000 gallon tank that accepts two waste streams from our process. This sludge is heated and mixed and is totally void of oxygen. There was an overpressure condition that you believe was caused by a clogged outlet pipe. And this caused the roof to be broken from its mounts. The first step was to clean the 600,000 gallons of sludge and grit from the tank in order to assess the tank and see what was needed for the repair. The cleaning started on October 11th and was -- and will be completed by the 23rd of November. We had an engineer spec the needed repairs, and the bid will go out, as you were saying, and having the funding, having the meeting. And I, as you said, you want to try to get this on our Board of Select agenda on December 5th. And I believe the Board of Finance meets the following night. I'm gonna ask if the RTM would consider a special meeting so you don't have to wait for the regular meeting, which isn't unusual. They could do that. And so, that's where we are. I want to just also share with the public as well that Sands Clary was down there, as we spoke about. We've had a couple of meetings on that with DPW as well. And Sands says, "The Health Department has discussed resident concerns with the staff at the Connecticut Department of Public Health and Environmental Occupational Health Assessment Program." DPH staff advised that this change would not likely lead to a change in health risk or infectious diseases other than health impacts from exposure to sewer odors. For infectious disease risk, the individual would have to be in direct contact with sewage. And the WPCF staff has indicated the process change is not introducing any new additional sewage or matter into the environment. WPP, the W, the Department of Public Health stated that the odors experienced are likely from the sewage-related gases and that these do not contain infectious material. DPH further explained that the strong odors are likely hydrogen sulfide and other components found in sewage, and that these components do not, do produce a strong odor at very low concentrations. Department of Public Health advised that the levels at which these odors are noticeable are hundreds of times below, which would produce health impacts. But we are in discussions with three air testing companies trying to get them queued up to go down and do air quality testing, not just for the interior of the building, but also for the residential areas as well. And I think I've covered everything that I have. Is there anything you want to add, John?
You got it all.
Okay. And I'll open it up to the board. Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah. Thank you for being here. And I do think Nancy joined us remotely. Quick question.
Yes, sir.
John, you laid out, hey, these are the steps, right? When can the public, because what they're gonna care about is, number one, the safety issues, which the first select woman spoke to. When can they expect the odors to dissipate? Is that when the cleaning's done, you just said, this week, or when?
Some of the odors will go away from the cleaning because there's a piece of equipment outside, and it's dewatering sludge and falling into a truck outside. So, once that stuff stops, some of it will be gone. Not all of it, and not probably to the level that they'll be happy with. But that'll be one part of it. And then, the main focus of the odor will go away once the tank is fixed and we're getting back to the way we should be.
Which is why it's so important
Exactly.
to get it fixed as quickly as possible. Got it. I remembered at this table discussion about the digestin, digestion
Digestor.
Digestor and that, thank you. Remind me what we had done previously on this, because it feels as though we've discussed this and approved some funds moving forward.
We have. We just, we did, we put it out to bid to do the whole project
Right.
in one lump sum. And there was a lot of unknown because you have a tank full of sludge, and you don't know what exactly is broken or what needs to be repaired.
Right.
So, the one bid came in, it was rejected. We split it, cleaning first, then repair.
Right.
So, the cleaning we discussed, the cleaning we appropriated the funds from the WPCA fund balance, 625,000. And that is being done, and it's under the 625. I think it's 538 or whatever. So, that was the main focus of the recent round of talks, is getting it cleaned out.
Right.
Now that we've got it, it's, it'll be done Wednesday. You can see in there, it's pretty, I'm happy to see what I saw because it's not as bad as we anticipated. But still.
Was this years overdue, though, to clean that out?
Yes.
How many years?
Twenty.
Okay. So, this was 20 years overdue. Then you brought it forward. We approved it to clean it, but before you guys could actually get in to clean it, going through the process, this pipe broke and resulted in this. Is that, is that appropriate, or am I misstanding it?
It was probably talked about to clean it in 2012, because that's 10 years after it was cleaned. What happened at that point, I don't know. And then subsequently, it was probably talked about, and I don't know what happened.
Right.
I took over in October of '21, and April of '22, here we are.
Right.
Welcome to the jungle, so.
Yeah, hang on just a second.
One minute, Nancy. Tom's just finishing up, and then I'll call on you.
Is this?
Okay, it's just a response to that very thing.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Let me ask, did I state it appropriately, though? The funds had been set aside to do this.
Yes.
We were in the bid process.
Correct.
Then something failed.
No, it failed before.
It failed before?
It failed before.
Okay.
Yes. Go ahead, Nancy.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Sorry, I just wanted to jump in first to say thank you to Mr. Bodie and his team, because they've been working so hard on this. And it was very clarifying to hear from him over the past week and a half about the issue. And also to thank the Vice Chair, Joe DiVanzo, and one of the Commissioners, Matt, had gone down to really understand and took a tour during this whole thing. So, thank you to them. I'm sorry, I was interrupting only to not push back, but to offer that some municipalities, it's my understanding based on our conversation at the last WPCA meeting, some municipalities make the decision not to clean it and to respond because cleaning can be upwards of a million dollars, and that there are municipalities who make the decision to not clean and instead respond as things break or respond when they break. So, it's not necessarily two different people who are managing might have made two different decisions to clean or not to clean over the decades. Isn't that your understanding too from our discussion, John?
Yeah, there are some towns that decide to just, you know, let it ride till something happens. And that's totally their prerogative. Going through what I'm going through right now and what everybody else is going through, I don't, I don't like that idea, but.
Right.
Yeah, no, and I agree. And I, and as I said, moving forward, we can learn from this. I just, I wanted to, as we're looking back, it's not necessarily wrongdoing that someone made that decision all those number of years ago. It's that they may have made the decision based on a philosophical approach.
Absolutely. I wasn't part of the conversation, so who knows what was in the conversations that they had? And maybe at the time, the prudent thing to do was to let it go. I just.
Yeah, no, I wanted to make sure, quite frankly, from our perspective, what we could have done differently, right?
Right.
I mean, it's perfectly valid for, in the past, as you guys both said, to say, hey, we're gonna let it ride until something breaks.
Right.
The, what happens because of that is this situation. Right?
Right.
But I wanted to make sure from our perspective, and I, that my memory was correct. It was brought to everybody's attention. We acted upon it, but by the time we actually could get in there to do the work that we had approved, there was this failure that caused the issue. That's what I'm trying to get to.
Right. The failure happened, and then we moved forward for the cleaning and all that other.
Yeah.
That.
Okay, but was it the cleaning, or was it the failure that is causing this odor? In other words, if they had elected to clean this years ago, would the odor, is this odor inevitable when they go and clean the digester?
Yes, because you're not processing the sludge the way it's intended. So, you're taking raw sludge, you're putting it in a tank, and then you're running it through the equipment.
Okay, so, in that regard, then, let me take a step back, then. In that regard, then, what could have been done differently, or maybe we did it, and I'm not aware, is there could have been more of a public notification that we're going to have this for a period of time until this is fixed, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the issue was, there probably should have been public notification of a period of time where this was gonna, because it was gonna happen whether we waited for it to fail
Right.
or whether you fix it anyway.
If we did the cleaning as scheduled, the downtime would have been a lot less.
Understood. Understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, listen, my understanding is, just based on the conversations on this over a period of time, that it's recommended it's cleaned every 10 years.
Right.
You know, you can't, I mean, it's like anything else, right? A Board of Education or Board of Finance, they're not gonna make, the WPCF's not gonna make a decision. The administration needs to go to these boards and ask them for these things, right? Hey, we're supposed to clean this every 10 years.
Right.
Put it on your agenda, we should clean it. So, regardless, we have this problem now, and I wanted to just make sure that we had the opportunity to share this publicly with our community. I've been doing my best to field emails from residents, and I feel terrible. These people are having to have, smell this horrible smell, you know, all the time.
Right.
And, you know, there's kids standing at butt stops smelling this, and, you know, it's, people can't even take their dogs for a walk. So, this, you know, it's, it's not good. And I just wanted our residents to know that we are doing everything with our power to get this done as quickly as possible, and also with the testing.
Okay.
Go ahead, Nancy.
All right, you bring up, yeah, thank you. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. There's a lag, a delay. You also raise a great point in terms of the systems. And I wonder if there's a way for us as a board to get a list of what some of those higher ticket items or long overdue items so that as we go into budget season and thinking about where we might need to be looking at funds and whatnot, and certainly specific to the WPCA, but more broadly, where there might be other things that we have to anticipate, this kind of thing. I don't know how one goes about that inventory, but it might be helpful as we're planning for the, you know, the next year, the next five years, and so on.
Well, I mean, part, yes, and that's a good point. And part of that's when I work with our department heads and build the budget. And then it's, we're also doing the capital planning workshop, which also reflects large capital projects that we've had department heads come and discuss with that working group that's being put, that's putting together the next year capital plan and our non-reoccurring, and then the five-year plan. Is there anything else, John?
Nope.
You want to add?
Nope.
All right, well, thank you. I appreciate you staying and being here today.
My pleasure.
Really appreciate it. And I want to thank Mr. Bodie for being very responsive over the weekend to residents. I was emailing at nine o'clock on Friday night, and John jumped right in. And I want to, I want to thank you for that because it's very appreciated, and I know our residents do appreciate it as well.
Well, I appreciate what you've been doing too, so thank you.
Well, thank you, John.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for being here.
Okay. Well, thank you for allowing me to take that up before the agenda. I just thought it was really important. All right, our next item, just for information purposes only, Fred Gorda is resigning, has resigned, excuse me, from the Town Planning and Zoning Commission. And his resignation date was October 24th. And I just want to thank him for his service to the town. And I'll open it up to the board if anybody has any comments.
I'm good. I thank him for his service to the town.
Our next item, can I get a motion to approve the appointment of Tom Corsillo? From, he will serve the term out to 11/25, that will fill that vacancy from Mr. Gordon. Do you have a motion to approve?
Nancy?
So moved, and, yeah, so moved. And it's, I think it's Ms. Gordon.
Yeah, I think so too.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Think I might have made.
I apologize. And do I have a second? Do I have, yeah, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, thank you. Is it Fre- Fredda?
Yeah.
Are you on the line?
She resigned. And then it's Tom that's.
No, it's Tom. Yeah, I'm sorry, Tom. Tom, are you on the line?
I'm here.
Oh, Tom, you're here. Okay, because he said you were gonna be calling in, so I apologize. Hi, Tom.
Hi.
I really messed that one up, didn't I? Sorry, but it's been a long, it's been a long day. So, we have a motion in a second. Would you like to share any comments with the board? You want to step up to the microphone?
Well, thank you, thank, thank you. Thanks for considering me. I just want to say Fairfield's an incredible town, and I've spent the last 17 years working in land use and zoning. And I think zoning is a really important and powerful tool that can allow us as a town to strengthen the things that make the town great, and also to create opportunities for young people and seniors to stay here, and more families like mine to move here. So, I just want to say thank you for your consideration.
No, I appreciate it, Tom. And I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to speak to you prior, as you heard earlier, I had COVID.
I'm glad you're, glad you're feeling better now.
Yes. But I appreciate you stepping up, and your experience, I think, will be really valuable. It is, you're right, a very important commission, and they have a huge responsibility. And as I'm sure you're aware, there's a lot of hot button issues coming across
Oh, yeah.
the table at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and a lot of, a lot of passion. So, I appreciate you stepping up to serve because it's a lot of work.
I share the passion.
Well, that's good. That's good to hear. I'm gonna open it up to the board for any comments or questions. Go ahead, Nancy.
I just, yeah, I would like to say, you know, it's great to have you join this board, or I was glad to be able to put your name forward. I think you'll be a great asset. Thank you to Fredda Gordon for serving and stepping, stepping in, and she, best of luck to her on her next endeavor. She's moving away. But it is important for all the reasons that Fredda just articulated, and thank you so much.
Yeah, first of all, congratulations on your appointment. Second of all, best of luck. I know you're serving in an alternate seat, but who knows what happens? But it is, as you're probably well aware, given your background, very important to the town. And there's a lot of significant issues. I'd say it's probably one of the most exceptionally important commissions in town, given what we're up against and how it impacts the livability and affordability and the, really, the character and the, how the town looks.
Fully agree.
So, best of luck, and we're counting on you.
Thank you.
So.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right, if there's no further comment from the board, or are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this appointment? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carried unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, I'll tell you what I tell everybody, you're free to stay. Okay, next item. Do I have a motion to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into proposed contracts with Constellation New Energy Incorporated to provide electrical generation services for the town? Fairfield Public Schools commencing with UI, December 2023, meter reading period, and expiring December 2025, meter reading period. Funding for these services is payable in multiple town and Fairfield Public Schools' operating budgets. Motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
I will open it up. We have Gerald Foley here, who, Gerald, can you just give us a brief description of this?
Yes, so hi, thank you for having me. That's Gerald Foley, Director of Purchasing for the town. So, what you have before you is, it's the, we're seeking the authorization to execute agreements with its Constellation New Energy to acquire electrical generation services. What the town does is, we use a third-party supplier for our electricity. Our other alternate would be basically go, what's called the point of last resort, where you basically, you just go to what's called a deferral program. But what the town does is, instead, is we exercise our right to go and basically procure electricity on our own behalf. So, what we did is, we partnered with some surrounding towns, and we actually went out to acquire electricity for our town plus other surrounding towns. So, what we had is, we have a company called Tradition Energy that helped us. We went out, secured pricing. We actually asked, I think, there's six or seven suppliers to give us pricing. We got back pricing from three companies. Based on those offers, I am in, as well as the other members of the group, are recommending that we stick with, who our current provider is, is Constellation New Energy. What's a little different on this acquisition is, in the past, we would have locked in just one fixed price, and we would have done it, say, effective tomorrow. But because of the market conditions, we're gonna enter into what's referred to as an index, a blocks, and then a fixed pricing arrangement. So, what we're gonna do is, we'll have multiple contracts that we'll acquire basically approval on, but what we want to do is to start off with our index and our block, and we'll buy the electricity a total of four different times. And then at the end of the fourth time, we lock into a fixed price. That's, so the point to that is, is basically to mitigate market swings and to hopefully get a better price for the town. Unfortunately, what's happened is, the market is such as the, right now, we pay about 7.25 percent, 7.25 cents per kilowatt hour. When we go with the new contract, it's gonna be a drastic increase. It's gonna be about 12 and a half cents. So, but, but in order to mitigate that, that's why we're coming forth to you because we want to try to get that number lower. And we're trying to do that between now and when our next contract basically kicks in, which is next December.
Thank you, Gerald. And, you know, obviously, this is what the town does. Just try to enter into these contracts to get the best price. But obviously, utility costs are going up across the board.
Correct.
For both companies, Eversource and UI. So, I'm gonna open it up to the board for, is there any questions? Tom?
Nancy, do you have anything?
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. So, I see here, first of all, I see that this looks like a consortium buy. So, are we buying with Bridgeport, Easton, Monroe, Newtown, Trumbull, and Westport?
Yes.
So, all of them need to go through this process and approve it?
Yes, yes. So, the struggle is, is we've all got to agree. So, what we're doing is, we're targeting to hopefully, if it's approved tonight, to go forward tomorrow and to actually start executing the contracts.
Have the other towns agreed?
Yes, so the other towns are in the process of it, and by tomorrow, they're all gonna be. So, initially, they all were in consensus to, bless you, to go forward. And so, now, we're just kind of just putting everything in order.
Okay, so, but are, are rates that are listed on this schedule are pretty well contingent on it being all of us because it's a block purchase, correct?
Right, so what happens is, Bridgeport has the biggest load.
Yeah.
So, they've, they want, they wanted to sign a couple of weeks ago.
So, they're set.
So, they're set. And so, now, it's just a matter of getting all the other towns to line up.
Got it. So, there, and each of the other towns are going through this right now?
Yes.
And if one of the towns fails, or a couple of these towns fail, and it comes back, it will come back to us with different rates? Is that what I'm to understand?
So, what we have is, the numbers that you have in front of you, those are about a week old. So, the rates are gonna change. So, but the good news is, is there's what they call an index, and then there's what they call the block. So, the index number's actually gone down, but the block number's gone up a little bit.
What's the difference? What's the block?
So, the, well, so I'll start with the index. So, the index is basically all the pricing that they could fix.
Yeah.
And so, that's, there's a, there's a whole series of things. But then, when you go to the block, the block is the actual commodity. That's what you're getting on the open market.
Yeah.
So, that's the one that has the highest level of fluctuations.
Right.
So, when the market's up, that block number goes up. When the market goes down, that block number goes down. So, the index went down because there was a little bit more stability. But then, the block number went up for that same reason, the opposite reason, for the instability.
So, when I, when I look at this, when I looked at the contract term here, and it says fixed, that's the portion that they're willing to fix? And then we're still, so this isn't the complete fixed price? Because I was gonna ask that.
So, you should have, you should have two of them. So, one is for the index, the index they're gonna fix for us. That's the one, it's point zero, point 0399, I think, is the number. And then, the second one is the block number, which is point 08. And then, there's a couple other integers after that. That's the one that we're gonna do, is that number, the block number, that they're gonna hold that, I think, till tomorrow noon time. So, our goal is, is to get the contract signed, get that back to them, and then they're gonna refresh it and say, okay, yeah, the number is good, or number was not good.
My concern here is, you don't want to sign one of these that goes out too far, giving the volatility in the energy prices, and that it's been on the upswing.
Right.
But I see here that it's 12-month fixed, 24-month, 6, 36.
Right, so what we've opted to do is to pick the middle one, to go 24-month. And the rationale was, is that we're hoping into next year, into 2023, that the number actually goes down a little bit, and then would come back to the board to potentially, in other words.
You can do that before the 24 months?
Yes, yeah. Well, actually, we'll lock in for 24 months, and then if we go out, say, say we want to add an additional 12 months to make it to the 36, what we do is what's called a blend and extend. is what's called a blend and extend. So you would take advantage of the second group of 12 and you would come you would have the company in essence block those numbers and then you take the two together and you create basically a lower lower number.
So I don't follow this on a day-to-day basis.
No, no, I got you. No, no, understood.
But everything I've understood about the energy market is rates have gone like this and stayed relatively like this. Why would we lock in for 24 months as opposed to actually locking in for 12 months?
Well, the well, the issue is that it's the way that so the way the pricing is, is the 12-month was actually higher. So and so you went 12 months was higher, then you went to 24, it was a little bit down, 36 was lower. But the point was is that ideally.
Well, that's because they're hedging because they.
Right, they expected to go right. So but the thought being because of that trend, our thought was is that if it's going that same way is that is to basically take pick the middle one, which is definitely lower. And then once we go into 23, we would look at those that additional 12 months and in essence, go out potentially to a total of three years. This is giving you a little back history.
Yep.
So when we initially signed up with Constellation, we assigned, I think it was 36 months. This is it never came before the board. This is our first time kind of at this. And so what we did is we were about eight cents or I think it was 8.5 cents. And in the midst of that one, what ended up happening was the market went down. So we ended up doing is we had Constellation do that same process. I just said that blend and extend. So what we did is we went from 8.5 cents to 7.98 cents. And then we did it one more time and we took it from 798, yeah, point 798 to point 0725 is which we are now. And so that takes us all the way out to December of 2023. So our thought is is that we'll do the similar arrangement with the new one. But the problem is is because of the market, we were concerned to go out 36 months because our everyone's thinking.
I wouldn't go out 36 months.
Right. So our thought was is to go out 24, take mitigate some of that potential increase and then at the same time, start looking at the market in 2023 and hopefully get some downward downward motion in the market and then terms of locking it in.
What do you what is your expectation? Does the Board of Education need to do anything with this, given the fact that they are a significant user of electricity?
Yeah, so right, so it asks that. So right now, they're they're about 35, well, we're the town is about 35% of electricity.
I would have figured.
And the Board of Ed is about 65%.
Right.
So I've been passing this on to them to make them aware of that.
So do they need to approve this as well?
I don't believe so, no. I I don't think they do.
And we is the town?
We didn't last time, we didn't.
No, I think the town we did the last two, the last three or four times that we've that I've done this is it just been the town's been signing off as the purchasing authority and then just extending the pricing to them.
Correct.
Yeah, just I'll defer to Mr. Baldwin on that. Just that that's fine. I'll defer to the town attorney. Other question I have here is we've invested a lot in solar programs through the course of the years. I know, I think, Mr. Brenner, at one point, you were kind of looking at this, though I don't I don't want to put you on the spot or anything. But have we seen saving in energy costs related to the other programs, the alternative energy programs?
Do you want solar?
Yeah, well, and other thing, I mean, for years, we've people have come before us and said, invest in this infrastructure, invest in this, invest in solar. This goes back to when I was on the Board of Finance. And we're going to save money because we're going to save utilization. We're going to save. Have we realized that savings in that area? I mean.
We absolutely realize savings. I think the savings that we've actually realized are much less than we were hoping. One of the things that I've learned from solar is you, when you enter into a contract with solar, you're you're they're providing you energy at a fixed price.
Right.
So if the prices go up or down, you're paying that fixed price. So if the prices go way up on the market, then you're saving more money. But as I said earlier, the savings that we're realizing, I think, are far less than what we're estimating at the time. Look at it overall.
Have we put in place that you're aware of other programs to save energy at our at our schools and at our administrative town administration side? Only because families are doing this right now, right? So I want to know we're doing this.
It's my understanding that I think on one Board of Ed roof, we've installed or are planning on installing a lot of new solar panels. On the town side, we have not since I've been here for two and a half years, we have not done any new solar panel projects.
Right. How about things like energy programs in terms of how we're managing utilization of energy, you know, turning off the lights at night, you know, the silly things that and we're all I run around and do at my house, right?
A lot of those have already been done in the town buildings. A lot of the offices.
The energy audits.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
They only come on when you walk in the room and they turn off when you leave. So we that has all been done on the town side, I want to say, at least three or four years ago.
Okay.
So there aren't any new programs that we're planning on doing.
And I would guess my last, thank you. My last question is, I assume Mr. Baldwin's gone through these contracts and signed off on them?
Yes.
Okay. And we don't have to sign anything with the other towns? This is just?
No, no, it's it's done individually and then collectively, they submit them as one.
Okay. Thank you.
Nancy, do you have anything?
Nope, thank you. I was listening in to that, but thank you.
Okay, very good. So the board has discussed this. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Hearing none, bring it back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Gerald.
Thank you very much. And stay there.
Can I make a motion? I can waive the reading of this next item?
Sure, I mean, it's not very long. I just want to make sure that the public does know what we're talking about. I'll be quick, how about that?
Yeah.
Make a motion to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into proposed contract with Motorola Solutions to provide communication system upgrades for the fire and police departments per Motorola's proposal dated October 10, 2022. Pricing consistent with the state of Connecticut's Department of Administration Services contract awards in the amount not to exceed $6,622,986. Funding for these system upgrades are available through the account number listed on the agenda. And this is for the Emergencies Radio Project. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
Thank you. We have Chief Chief Calamores and Chief McCarthy and who else? Gerald Foley on this item. Who wants to go first?
I'll kick it off.
Okay.
So just a brief background, we've received 3.5 million in grant funding for this project to replace our antiquated mobile radios in our cars, fire trucks, and both both departments' vehicles, in addition to all handhelds and infrastructure for support of those radios. This, what is before you is the proposal or proposed contract through Motorola and Norcom to accomplish this task. We received, as I said a minute ago, we received a grant for 3.5 million and appropriated money for the remainder of the of the build from the town.
And I just want to highlight, I know it seems like a long time ago that this happened, but it takes time to pull everything together and that that grant can be pulled from at any time. And I want to, once again, thank Senator Blumenthal for his efforts in assisting and when we reached out and we worked with him. And I want to recognize Captain Koval, who put in a tremendous amount of work originally to apply for that grant. And and the the package he put together was very good. And the constant harassment by the first select woman to the senator didn't hurt either.
We thank you for that.
It, you know, was a big win for the town and and I'm glad to see we're finally going to contract on this because, as Chief McCarthy talked about quite a bit during that process of this, is that our our systems just aren't going to sync up with other systems and it's dangerous. So I'm really glad that we're finally.
I'll also add, the length of time that it took for the contracts was dependent on the grant approval. So once we got the grant approval and then the funds approved by the town, then they began to start the contracts.
Right.
Is there any questions from the board?
Yes, if Nancy doesn't have any, I've got a.
Nancy, do you have anything?
Go ahead.
Chief, thanks. I was lucky enough, I think it's a couple of years ago now, I was brought in on this and and it was pretty impressive to see. But I would like for the public and for the members of the press that are watching this, this is, I would say, something that's truly press-worthy, newsworthy. It's a significant investment in our town's safety and in safety for our officers, both fire and police. And I just, if if you wouldn't, for the record, because a lot of this happened previously, talk about some of the benefits that this system gives us. Do your sales pitch a little bit. Give us a little bit of the benefits versus what we're currently dealing with.
So probably one of the most significant is our mutual aid responses. It gives us interoperability between Bridgeport, Fairfield, Westport, Easton, Norwalk has just jumped onto the state system. And that's very quick, just a very quick snapshot of that. More so for fire, who does a lot of mutual aid assistance with other departments, to include Bridgeport and Westport. We do as well, but it's sometimes on a one-on-one basis. If we need an extra car or something like that, it's not as not as prominent, it's sometimes at a smaller scale. But this provides interoperability. If we were to have a critical incident, communication, as we've seen in past, is the always always the first thing to fail. The second thing is coverage. Currently, our radios don't work very well in the north end of town and there's some other locations within the town, low spots or high spots, that they just there's just no coverage. This new radio program is showing higher than 99% coverage with the proposed plan. So we're looking forward to have not only coverage, but then also coverage inside buildings. So that's another thing. If we had a critical incident, let's say in a school or a or a business, we would have some some difficulties or some challenges communicating with each other, those inside to those outside.
To that extent, how old is the current system that you guys are operating on?
Early 90s.
Thirty years old?
Yes, sir.
What about AMR that provides a lot of our ambulance services? Are they on this as well?
They are.
So they're they're easily being able to communicate with both the departments on this?
Yeah, they have their own radio system that computes with communicates with our dispatch center. They're on their own system that is on the state system.
And this obviously seemingly interacts with our new ECC?
That is correct.
Okay. I I actually had a couple of questions come in from the public that I thought were interesting. One asked about town personnel will test this? How does that work? I think that said that somewhere. Will that be officers or will that be other members of the town administration that'll be asked to call in?
I'm not I'm not sure about that. That it's it would be by officers and testing that's done by the vendor.
Okay.
Yeah, so so there's like during high foliage, they test and then when the leaves are down, they test again. So there's certain times of the year they test when coverage should be or should be at its worst.
Right.
And that's when they test to get coverage estimates.
Got it. The next question would be, right now, I know it's it's interesting, actually, there's a lot of people that listen to the bands and to the activity that's going on. It's it's amazing to me when I hear about that in public. Are people going to be able to still hear that?
Yes and no. There will be some channels that will be encrypted.
Right.
Which is.
For safety purposes.
For safety purposes of the of the officers or fire personnel. And there's there's other channels that will be open to the public.
And is that pretty standard in today's world, chief, that some are encrypted now?
That is.
And do we not have that on the current system or do we have that on the current system?
We do not have that on the current system.
So everything is open now and you think that's quite actually dangerous or or it's better to not have everything out there? Is that fair?
My I'm I'm indifferent to it. I think there's benefits and drawbacks to it. I think that most agencies, as I'll speak on behalf of police, most agencies are going with their primary channel as encrypted and then their secondary channels, some are open to the public that they could hear on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Chief, do you is there any difference there for the fire department or similar?
[inaudible].
Okay. How long is this going to take to implement?
So we're looking at about 12 to 14 months. As I said, seasonal does is dependent on the the, I guess, approval of the testing after the radio system is put in place. Another concern we do have, while it's not a huge concern, one of the concerns we do have is supply chain. So that's, you know, that kind of goes across the board. They're telling us between 12 and 14 months for a full build and testing. We're optimistic at that estimate, but also looking forward to getting the getting the project started and completed.
Right. And Motorola was the game in town for this because they have the state system and the system that everybody else is using. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Jared, the all the funding for this is currently in place, correct?
Yes, all the funding is in place. There was a approval for the $7 million in total to total spend with half of that coming from bonding to complement the half that we're getting in grant money.
And how long are the bonds on this?
20 years.
And how long's this system supposed to last?
The estimated lifespan is 10 years, but I would say we lasted with our old one for 30 years and it's far more antiquated than the new, you know, the new system is the latest and greatest. I could see I could see it lasting longer than 10 years.
But are you going to have to upgrade this if there's decisions made elsewhere in order to remain compatible?
We are on a ser warranty service for five years, which is built into the the cost.
Yeah, but let's say Bridgeport and the other towns. What I'm concerned I'm concerned about the mismatch between the the level of bonding, the years, and.
Yeah, if we're still paying in year 11 for an antiquated radio system.
And I know you're saying, hey, we expect it to last longer than that. But part of this, as you correctly said, is the compatibility with the other towns. So what I'm saying is, if they elect to upgrade their system in 10 years, does that mean you're going to be back here in 10 years? Do you see what I'm saying? And still paying for a 20-year bond? And Jared, that bond isn't in place yet, is it?
That one, yeah, I would I would have to check on that. I thought we I thought we did, but I have to go back and look at the OS.
Yeah, that that that's my only area of concern is the funding and that's obviously not your concern, but I I would like to know if we're going to bond this over 20 years, that it's within our control to say, and you guys are comfortable saying you're going to use it for 20 years. So that's the one follow-up item I I think I would have on this.
I think part of it was though we're on a state, we're going on a state system.
Yes.
As opposed to we were now just on our own.
And upgrades are made by this.
Right, but yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, upgrades are made by the state. You know, there may be software upgrades and that's one of the one of the keys to these radios is that, you know, you have you have it's basically a computer and they pump through updates just like your just like your cell phone.
Right. I'm just reacting to the comments of, hey, the 10-year useful life, which, thank you for giving the answer, and what the intent is of everybody, because it's the interoperability, I think is the word you used, that makes this very compelling, particularly on the fire side. And if we're going to bond this, like I said, it's it's just about the length of time of the bond.
Sure.
With can I just ask though to follow up with that? So just to be clear, it's it's everybody's on the state system and we're not. So we're having going to have an issue where we're not going to even be able to communicate. So we have to go on the system. But the five-year allows us to what? Like if a radio breaks, we can get a new one or how does that work?
It's 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 full replacement and service for the the radios and that's it's baked into the cost of the the thing. It's it's on the last section of the of the page where it shows the maintenance service warranty for all the items.
Most of it's based on like an internet server, like sort of like connecting to their system, right? Is that?
That's beyond my.
Let me speak to Mr. Flynn's question. So they they handheld devices are what typically has a 10-year lifespan. And we have experienced, as the chief said, we hold on to those and keep them serviceable much longer than that. And as the first select one pointed out, this is part of the state system and it will be upgraded regularly by the state.
And we're paying for that.
And we are paying for that.
We're including.
So there is not a system overhaul that is anticipated within that 20 years. However, subscriber units, handheld portables, and maybe some mobiles might need to be replaced, but not the system because it is being constantly refreshed.
Yeah, that's what I would have thought and it was the 10-year useful life that concerned me.
Tom, I just went I just went back and looked at the authorization. It was actually 10 years.
Okay, good. I feel better.
Thanks, Jared.
Great. Thank you, Jared. Gentlemen, thank you, and best of luck with this, this system.
Nancy, do you have anything?
I don't have anything. Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any comments or questions from members of the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item number seven. Can I get a motion to hear and consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into a proposed 10-year site lease contract with Crown Atlantic Company LLC, Crown Castle, to provide the town with a license to install, operate, maintain, and communication equipment on Crown Castle cell tower site in the amount not to exceed $427,000. Funding for this lease is available through the account numbers listed on the agenda, and this is also regarding the Emergency Radio Project. Motion to approve?
Submoved.
I'll second it.
Thank you. I'm going to open the item up. We also have the same, both chiefs and Gerald Foley. Anybody want to talk about the, little bit, just briefly?
Yeah, I'll just, just give a quick, brief. The radio project is dependent on this site and shelter. There's a 170-foot tower behind 281 Woodhouse Road. There's a shelter at the base of this tower that is owned by Crown Castle, and we are entering to a lease to utilize that shelter for the infrastructure of our radio system.
Yeah. How long's the lease?
The lease is for...
10 years.
10 years, $3,000 a month with an escalator clause in there.
Yep, this says it in there.
Okay.
And this is trying to help us with our problem, with our...
Coverage.
Cell tower coverage.
That's correct, yes.
Great.
There's a problem.
I'll also, also add that we did look for alternatives, and there are no alternatives. This was, this was dependent for the infrastructure of the radio project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, back to the board. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. So that's, you know, to your point, Selectman Flynn, you know, $6,622 plus a $3.5 million grant, plus nearly $500,000 investment toward safety in our town, so...
Yep.
Thank you.
Good stuff. Thank you so much for showing up. And don't forget the item on the...
Thank you.
I will not forget.
Upstairs?
Yes.
Nice job.
Don't lock, and don't lock the door, Bonnie.
Best of luck with the implementation.
Appreciate that so very much.
Yeah.
Don't lock the door?
I will.
Thank you, sir. All right.